Good evening and welcome to the May 22nd, 2023 work session of Mayor and City Council. I just heard some music, but hopefully that didn't come through on the video. So tonight we have one discussion topic. However, first, we need to do a motion for an executive session and then I want to say a few words about the book festival on Saturday and then we'll get to our discussion topic. So, someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session immediately following this session tonight, Monday, May 22nd, 2023, pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305 B1I regarding the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topic to be discussed is a personnel matter to conduct the city attorney's annual performance review.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, that carries unanimously. And thank you, guys. So I want to just read very quickly the note that I sent to all of the city staff and to our GBF committee. And it's, I mean, I mean it to apply to any, all of our volunteers, people from the public who attended, our authors, our sponsors. So I will say, in many ways, what we saw on Saturday outshined the dream that I brought to you 15 years ago. I have always aimed to achieve my first bullet point below, which is bringing the pinnacle of stories, ideas, wisdom, poetry, and art to share with our community. But it was all of you who added and brought to life the next three, a showcase for how friendly, welcoming, and open our city can be, a masterclass in how to produce and run a regional, regional scale event, and a place where every single attendee, at least all those that I talked to, all ages, all backgrounds, all socio-economic levels, is happy and leaves, feels, leaves our event feeling enriched. On behalf of the Gaithersburg Book Festival and our city, I want to thank every single staffer, council member, GBF committee member, volunteer, attendee, sponsor, partner, supporter, author, and general well-wisher who played any role at all in the success of our festival. Without a doubt, I am the luckiest mayor in the world. I get to work with a group who is not only talented, caring, friendly, and professional in the way they deliver service, but also a group that has always been willing to take ownership and plant their own stake in what started as a dream of mine. The moment you guys bought into that dream was the moment that the Gaithersburg Book Festival was no longer mine. It was and is ours. Other municipalities are not doing this, but we are. It is a special, special thing. It is enlarging people's lives. And I hope you're proud because I am so proud of all of you with sincerest gratitude and appreciation. So that's my message to the community, to everyone who had a part in this, to our staff. And if anybody wants to add anything, I'm going to give you a chance now. If not, then we'll go to our discussion topic. And not, okay, Lisa.
I would like to extend a congratulations to Tanisha for the interview that you did for The Viscible Child. It was amazing. I didn't get an opportunity to finish the book because I had to read the one I was, the 800 page I was responsible for. But your questions, even if I hadn't cracked it open yet, I would have, I would run to read it. So I did go home that evening and cracked it back open. So incredible job.
Thank you.
Well, that, I mean, that brings up a point that every, everybody on the day is here introduced programs at the book festival. Many of our staff, in addition to the people on the days here, introduced programs. Some served as moderators, as Tanisha did in a spectacular, she did two programs. She, she interviewed Andrea Elliott and then she, she did an introduction for the panel in the next hour. And that's what I'm talking about. Like, the fact that people buy into it, take ownership of this thing. You know, it's not just, I don't, I'm not just dragging everybody kicking and screaming to the book festival. You guys are, you know, adopting it as yours. So it means a lot to me. Neil?
So I have to say, I went back and looked at my list and I've read five of the books that, by authors who were at the book festival. And I think that's a lot of what it's all about as well. There's all five authors that I'd never read any of their stuff before. One of them, I went, I went and found a second book by because I enjoyed it so much.
Oh, I love that.
So I don't know if, I'm sure five is, is a paltry number compared to the number that you've read for the book festival, but that, that's a lot of what it's all about is, is, you know, finding, finding new things to read and new worlds to explore.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Yeah, I think I'm about at 20 of the books, but there was 135. So I'm still like way below where ideally I'd like to be. Anyway, without, is anybody, no one else, no other hands? Okay, we're going to get into our discussion topic and I, I thank you all. So let me just pull that up here. Okay. I'd like to invite Geraldine and Maureen. Geraldine Bernado from our casework coordinator and Maureen Walker, program coordinator, to lead us in a discussion to, on the Community Development Block Grant and Grant Housing Emergency Assistance Program. And welcome to both of you.
So hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Maureen Walker and I'm the program coordinator for the Division of Housing with the Department of Community Neighborhood and Housing Services. And I'm so grateful to be here with you all this evening. As the mayor said, I'm here with my colleague Geraldine Bernado, who's the bilingual caseworker coordinator for the Division of Community Services. Geraldine and I are here to provide an update on the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG-funded Emergency Rental Assistance Program, specifically reviewing the surge of cases in fiscal year 2023 and how staff recommend responding to the increasing need. So this slide just provides an overview of what we're going to discuss this evening. I'll provide some additional information regarding the program and the source of funding. And then Geraldine will jump in to provide more information regarding the logistics of the program, including a review of fiscal year 2023, staff's recommended program updates, comparison to neighboring jurisdictions, specifically Rockville and Tacoma Park, as well as our predictions for the following fiscal year. So we just wanted to provide a little bit more background on the Emergency Assistance Program. So as you can see, it started in 2003. And since the beginning of the program, the purpose has been to both prevent eviction and also help residents strengthen their financial stability. Strengthening their financial stability was something that's been specifically enhanced over the last year with the launch of the Financial Empowerment Center, or FEC. As of January 2023, all of the recipients of emergency assistance funding have been referred to the FEC. And it's now an expectation of the program moving forward. Referrals are tracked through the program's data tracking system and outcomes are tracked through the FEC. So of all fiscal year 23 emergency assistance recipients, 33 of those referred saw an FEC counselor and clients who were referred to the FEC by community services staff had an average of 3.6 sessions and achieved 19 outcomes. These outcomes included accessing other support programs, increased funds and savings, increased credit scores, reduced delinquency accounts, and reduced non-mortgage debt by 10%. So I just wanted to also highlight the good work of the FEC. So there are two components to the Emergency Assistance Program, which include the short-term rental assistance. So that covers up to three months of rent, which is the maximum with CDBG funding. And the second component is that direct service work. So community services staff are able to work directly with residents to counsel and offer additional assistance and/or referrals. The program has been jointly administered by the Divisions of Housing and Community Services. So Community Services and Housing staff are regularly communicating with one another to ensure that city residents in need are able to access their emergency rental assistance. And both divisions have distinct roles within the program. So did, I'll just break, kind of highlight both of those. So the Division of Community Services worked directly with City of Gaithersburg residents, determining eligibility, managing client records, conducting intakes, and submitting the request for assistance forms to housing staff, and also ensuring compliance with program requirements. Where the Division of Housing oversees the funding for the program, working directly with HUD to administer funds appropriately and track this spending. And the Division of Housing is also responsible for reviewing all request forms, ensuring they meet the HUD CDBG requirements, which includes being at or below 80% of the area median income. And just for a reference point, so HUD just recently released the 2023 Area Medium Incomes, or AMIs, for the metropolitan Washington area. A family of four at 80% of AMI would be earning just over $121,000. Almost all of the recipients that we see through the Emergency Assistance Program are significantly less than that amount. And Geraldine will look at the income levels a little bit later. So once they're reviewed by the, the Division of Housing, then they're sent for approval by Assistant City Manager Tom Lonerga-Sieger. And once he approves them, the requests go to the Finance Department. Just to note, checks are only written out to property management companies or landlords who have been approved vendors within the City of Gaithersburg. And checks are not issued to recipients. So as mentioned, the Emergency Assistance Program is funded through federal Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds. And I'm sure you all know, but the primary programs funded by CDBG funds are the Gaithersburg GALP program for down payment and closing cost assistance for first-time home buyers, the new home repair program, which we're in the process of developing, and also the Emergency Assistance Program. Additional CDBG funds have gone to program administration, which is capped at 20% of the amount of funding we get annually, and also park improvement projects. The city cannot spend more than 15% of its annual CDBG funding on public services, which includes the emergency assistance. So the city is projected to receive $464,095, excuse me, for fiscal year 2024 in CDBG funding. Because of the 15% spending cap, the city have recommended that $69,000 be allocated for emergency rental assistance. And if approved, this funding would be available after July 1st, 2023.
So can I, I just want to ask a couple of questions.
Sure, sure.
So we've touched on this a little bit in some recent other meetings, but, and, if you all aren't necessarily the ones to answer this question, maybe someone else can from staff. But what is the, what is our understanding of the stated policy reason why the federal CDBG program limits the amount of CDBG money, money on public services to 15%? I, I mean, I'm not saying we have to agree with it as a city, but I'm just trying to understand. I mean, is it, is it because the origin of the CDBG program is, the intent, whether it's actually achieved or not, to focus more on long-term investment in the community as opposed to emergency relief? Or is there something else that, that animates that cap? I don't know if anybody here in the room actually has an answer to that.
David wants to take a stab, which I'll be really shocked at whatever he says because this is a very old regulation, but.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good question. And I just actually pulled this up off the website. I think the, the concern, at least, and I'm not going to go into legislative intent, but the concern was that, that these funds be focused on physical improvements and the public services are non-physical improvements. So if you look at the CDBG funds, we can spend 20% on administrative planning. So that's, you know, 20% off the top on non-physical things. And then you've got the, so you've got the balance of 80%. And I think the intent was to say, well, we want these funds to be spent on physical improvements, fixing homes, fixing infrastructure, building roads, you know, strengthening low-income communities. So I think that's a, it's almost as simple as that in terms of why they're trying to limit the amount of funding that goes to services.
You could almost think of it as the distinction between capital investment and operating costs, I guess. Okay. Can I follow up on that?
Go ahead.
So we use the majority of our funds for the GALP program, right, which helps with down payments on purchasing a home. So that's not necessarily improvement. So I guess my question is more is, how do we distinguish between a down payment for buying a house versus assistance for renting a house where somebody needs help to stay in it? And why one is considered a public service, but a down payment is not?
GALP is also a public service.
So that's also, so that falls into the 15%?
No, that's, I think, well, the distinction is we can use, we, in fact, we've been doing this in parallel for a number of years now. But I think it's the, the, the actual purchase of a home is you're purchasing a physical asset. That's, I think, it's, it's explanation that. Plus, it's, it's, it's really, it's not so much the money for the service piece, it's actually the money for actually purchasing the home. So it's not really a service, if you will.
Okay. And certainly no one is suggesting that the city or any of its staff endorsed these views. We're just trying to get an understanding of why the federal program, which has had these regulations for a long time, is set up the way that it is. So I appreciate the, the insight and the attempt to try to explain what the feds are doing or have been doing. And then I just wanted to clarify the last bullet on that last slide, which says that staff recommended that the city allocate $69,000. That's the 15% cap, right?
Correct.
So, no, I just want to make it clear that staff recommended the city go to the cap of what it was allowed to go to under the, under the federal rules. So that $69,000 represents
The maximum.
The maximum that we are allowed to do.
Sure.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, go ahead, Maureen.
Okay, sure. So just briefly, so just looking at statistics over the last five fiscal years. So between fiscal year 14 and fiscal year 19, the city assisted an average of 27 households. And over the past five fiscal years, the city has supported 254 households to avoid eviction and remain housed. Of those 254 households, there were 353 adults and 303, excuse me, 333 children supported through the emergency assistance payments from the city. And this included both regular and COVID CDBG cases. So as you can see in the table, there was a significant increase of CDBG cases during fiscal year 2023. And now I'm going to turn it over to Geraldine so she can provide more information on the program and the increase of cases in fiscal year 23.
Let me ask, was that, is that request for services or fulfilled services?
Those are fulfilled services.
Is there a delta above that where we weren't able to meet the needs during any of those years for requests made?
That would be.
Have we run out of money in previous fiscal years?
No.
We haven't. Maybe for two weeks, one year.
Maureen?
Answer's no.
Okay, the answer's no.
Yeah, no, we have not run out. All right, thank you for having me here. So I just am just going to go over our CDBG and the emergency assistance recipients that we have served during July 1st, 2020, and April 1st, 2023. So the, the majority of our recipients have been Black African-American households, so 49%, half of our recipients, followed by Hispanic households, so 37%. And the average income here, that you see here, was $32,153. And the average AMI has been 27%, so way below our 50% threshold. The average monthly rent for our recipients that we were serving was $1,513. And the average city payment with the max being of three months was $3,374. On the right, you see the reasons for assistance between FY '21 and FY '23, with the highest percentage of 85.9% being the loss of income. And then you can also see health and, health and illness also played a big part, but not as big as the loss of income in our households.
So just to note, the reasons for assistance, obviously, the percentages add up to more than 100%. So I think it's obvious that people are able to identify more than one reason that they needed assistance.
Yes.
So you might have situations where people are checking loss of income and illness as dual reasons.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, like you could have single-parent household that lost income. So yes. So some of our community partners that you see here on this list, we work collabor, in a collaboration with all of these great partners. But one of the biggest partner that we have is the County Health and Human Services. We're able to work together through an Emergency Assistance Coalition that we have, and we're able to receive a community partner referral, which they send over to us, letting us know that they are working with this client, they're working with this family, and that they are in need of assistance, and they also fall within the City of Gaithersburg limits. And this community partner referral goes out through a variety or a lot of different nonprofit partners and other agencies where they can also benefit from. And we also have client walk-ins, emails, phone calls, like any other office does as well, and some nonprofit partners such as Interfaith Works, Shepherd Pratt Neighborhood Safety Net as well. So some of these agencies have small funding that they also receive, and we're also able to refer out to them. And, and like Maureen mentioned, one of our biggest partners is FEC, the Financial Empowerment Center counselors, which work very closely with their families, trying to help them get stabilized. Property managers and landlords here in the City of Gaithersburg are also referring clients over to our office to ensure that they remain housed.
Can I ask a quick question, please? With the connection between FEC and this program, are, are you tracking, if loss of income is the, is the highest reason, and they're also in the FEC program, are we tracking those who've gained employment or additional income?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we see the benefit of, on both sides?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the FEC is able to see a lot more data. As their sessions go by, they're, they're able to see, like, long-term results.
But is it, is it directly connected to the, to the grant recipient?
Yes. So, yes, I refer, I work directly with the client, so I'm able to refer them directly to our, our counselors. And then the counselors are able to get back to me with, you know, information and also the client as well.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
We also partner with congregations. St. Martin's, right across the street, is also one of, one of our great partners. City departments from, you know, the mayor's office to council members, to county council members as well. City, and then school counselors is also one of our allies that work closely with us, just to make sure that all of our families stay housed. And it's, it's very important for them as well. All right. So UMAN, it's the Upper Montgomery Assistance Network. And UMAN works to prevent homelessness, helps families prevent the loss of vital utility services, and supports people in housing transition, educates, and empowers people in crisis. So UMA was awarded $115,256,000 for both FY ' '23 and FY '24 through the city's Community Service Housing Stabilization Grant. And as you can see throughout the years, the need has increased in, in providing assistance for the eviction utilities. And in FY '23, the eviction number that we have is 101. And then for utility assistance was 14.
So I just want to point out here, the number for FY '23 is up to December 31st, 2022. That means it's only half of the fiscal year represented in those numbers, right?
Correct.
So the numbers, you know, in the, in that row, which kind of sort of line up somewhat closely with the numbers from previous fiscal years, actually only represent half a fiscal year. Is that right?
Sure.
So we're really seeing a huge spike then for FY '23, assuming that the trend continues for the second half.
Right. We've talked about that spike, and they'll talk a little bit more about some of the reasons we won't cover for this.
Sure. I just want to make sure everybody sort of understands that that's what the data is showing there on that, on that one.
So for fiscal year 2023, this is going to be the recommended and updated eligibility criteria for the funds that we currently, that we will be having. So from January to March 2023, we had a surge of cases. So as of May 1st, there have been a total of 54 non-COVID CDBG cases that have been approved by the city. So one of the biggest reasons for this surge is that the county's COVID relief closed early in January 13th, 2023. One of their criterias was that, that the families had to be behind two months as of June 30th, which resulted in a lot of applications being denied and a lot of families left with large balances. The second reason that we're seeing is insufficient incomes. So low, a lot of, a lot of our families have low wages. And third, increased rents upon lease renewal. So the rents are definitely increasing. And the fourth is the emergency allotment of SNAP, so formerly known as food stamps, ended in February 28th. All right. So our recommended criteria is what you see on the right. Previously, we were able to assist with 1,740 per month for a max of three months. And we also had the limit where, well, they must have lived within the city limits for at least six months. And we were able to cover rent, condo fees, HOA fees, utility cost, and mortgage assistance. Our new recommended criteria is that we go for 1,640 per month, and that we're able to assist adult-only households for up to two months of rental assistance, and then households with minor age dependence up to three months.
Do we, do we have any data handy on how much of our assistance funding that was awarded went to things like HOA fees and condo fees as opposed to the other categories? Just given the distinction between the previous and newly recommended criteria?
We had no cases of HOA or condo fees.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. So for our new recommended, the six-month limit within the city remains the same. And we're going to be covering rent, mortgage, and utility costs. And then for this new criteria that we have, we, we're going to be providing assistance once every 12 months, and that is, that remains the same. We will be looking at the annual gross income at time of intake versus having, having us exceed HUD maximums prior to the loss of income. And then the last one is prioritizing households whose income did not exceed 50% of AMI. That was our previous eligibility, but we will no longer prioritize households based on AMI.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the public, so the idea is we're going to slightly reduce the amount that we're giving out with the idea that we're going to try to help more people?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, and I would add that we're also prioritizing households with children. As one of, I think our overarching goals is to create or support stability for households with children. So they're eligible for three months versus households without children, only being eligible for two.
Thank you.
So the recommended updated eligibility requirements is that all of our applicants must have a court notice or a judgment. And then after that, they must have a proof of employment or some type of benefit, and also work on a financial, billworkable plan with the FEC and with myself. Third, all applicants must have resided within the City of Gaithersburg for a minimum of six months. And they must be able to provide all employment information that CDBG requires, such as bank stubs, excuse me, pay stubs, bank statements, tax forms, benefit statements, income information.
And you said that's required by the CDBG program from, from the federal government?
Yes.
What, what's the typical span of time to receive an eviction or a judgment notice? What's the typical span of time to receive an eviction or a judgment notice?
So right now, it all depends on the court system and the sheriff's office. So depending on that, or, you know, it really varies. It can, you know, it can take from any, you know, from two to four weeks to, you know, a couple of months.
Okay.
To clarify, you're saying that somebody is delinquent on rent and can be evicted two to four weeks later?
So it all varies. Right now, from what our last update at our county meeting, was that, you know, the sheriff's office is maybe just two months behind, you know, on these eviction dates. So it really all depends on what's going on in the courts and what's going on in that asset.
I think also whatever the lease would typically say, but leases can vary, right? That you need to be at least 30 days behind. So I think it's from, you know, the landlord has to take action with the court. How long that process takes is up to the court docket.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Charlie, what kind of notice are renters given as far as their options, as far as being made aware of this kind of program or other assistance?
So we are avidly working with our landlords, which is one of the best ways to really get that information out there, but also with a lot of our, you know, school counselors, all of our, all the agencies that I mentioned before are the, you know, are the ones that are right then and there, either, you know, in the schools or they're working with them in other aspects, you know, doing other case management that, you know, that they know of our program, are able to refer directly to community services, and we're able to work with them there.
Do we have any requirement as far as obligations of a landlord when they're evicting to make people aware of assistance programs? I feel like there was something during COVID that we might have had, but.
I don't know the answer to that question. I would also say, I mean, it's still $69,000, right? So I don't think we have an awareness issue, especially given the surge of cases that we had recently. So I don't think that's an issue or a problem. I mean, we've gotten more cases from one particular property, and those are coming through the property manager or the landlords, right? They want the tenants to try and seek assistance. If staff knows a different response, feel free to jump in on there, but I don't believe there are any legal requirements to inform tenants of assistance programs if they're facing eviction. Maureen wants to say something.
Yes, Tanisha's right, there's no legal requirements, but ever since COVID started and it continues now, we're really working with several nonprofit agencies that are actually stationed at the courts that, you know, when people are coming in, they're provided with resource information, and actually also they're getting a knock on their door, saying, "Are you aware of services?" And we're on that list. So if they're at a city property, they're going to see, okay, call community services and see if they can be of assistance. The other thing that's happening and continues is that Kevin and his team with Neighborhood Services will email all the apartment complexes and landlords when, you know, a program has changed, or how to get ahold of Geraldine, or any pertinent information to help us get the word out that way, and that continues. And sorry, Duncan, thanks.
So like I mentioned, households with minor age children are being, are a priority of our current program, and so are senior households who are unable to obtain full-time jobs or employment, and residents who are medically determinable, physical or mentally impaired. So based on the other jurisdictions, you can see Gaithersburg, Rockville and Tacoma Park, they all have different funding sources and different maximums as well.
I just had some observations about this chart as well. I mean, you know, we can all sort of do the math, but just for the benefit of the public, I wanted to highlight a couple of things. First of all, the amount of funding we dedicate is higher than in other jurisdictions. Second of all, the line, the row on the chart that talks about the max amount offered, in the other two jurisdictions, it's $2,000 total. It's not $2,000 a month, it's $2,000 total. Whereas in our program, it's up to $1,640 per month for two or up to three months if there are minors living there. And so if you multiply that number, $1,640, by two or by three, you're seeing a much larger contribution than some other jurisdictions our size are able to do. So I just wanted to point that out.
And since you're pointing things out, I would add that we also give 100, over $115,000 to UMAN for similar assistance. So we're still, it's $69,000 in the city's program that Geraldine and Maureen manage, but we are also supporting eviction prevention outside of that program.
Right, another 115 to that 60.
And I did want to mention that the county does also have funding for eviction prevention, like I mentioned before, with their annual amount being around $4 million. And their max for their AMI is also 50%, and they're able to do a one-time assistance for every 12 months. So as you can see here, our AMI goes up to 80%. And we are working with employed or recipients who have regular benefits and who must have assigned eviction judgment or court notice. They must be a resident of the city of Gaithersburg for six months. So going forward, what we anticipate for this next fiscal year, we will be receiving the $69,000 in the city CDBG funding and $115,256 for UMAN for the second year of their contract. Throughout the next six months, we are anticipating seeing an increased cost of living and expenses, potential rent increases, lack of housing subsidies, especially affecting our extremely low and low-income families. Demand for a city case manager and vocational services are also increasing, and increased need in the Financial Empowerment Center as well. We will continue doing outreach and partnership building. We will continue working with our county and all of the partners that we already have great partnerships with. We will provide a more structured referral and a follow-up plan with the Financial Empowerment Center, and continue participating in county-wide housing meetings and emergency assistance coalition. And the expansion of the coordination between the grantees and the Financial Empowerment Center. And I will continue the community services coordination of area-wide case managers group that meets once a month.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much. So, Tanisha, are we, are we looking for sort of head nods? Because we can't literally take a photo to work session about the recommended updated criteria?
If you want to provide a head nod, that's fine. We thought, given the discussion we had several weeks ago, where I don't, it sort of came out of a different discussion we were having, I think during the budget process, that we were seeing this surge, and there was understandable concern on the mayor and city council about that surge and what was happening. And so we've been working on this. The staff has done an incredible job, sort of digging into the program and also looking at root cause, so that we can try and understand what might happen in the future and what we might want to do in future budget years. And so we just thought it was a good idea to bring the topic back for a full comprehensive update so that you all understand the process, understand some of the changes that we're making so that we can serve hopefully more and serve those who we've prioritized, including families with children. So we just wanted to bring you an update, it was informational.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, I appreciate all the thought that's gone into trying to stretch the limited resources we have to serve the most people. That all makes sense, and I'm going to open it up to anybody, I see Jim, and then we'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going through the stats on packet page 12 and looking at the fact that the average monthly rent for recipients was 1,500. Whipped out my calculator and realized, you know, if the average household income's 32,000, we're looking at people that are spending over 56% of their income on average on housing. And we talked about this through the housing element and in the budget process, just how many of our people are overcommitted. And I think it speaks to the importance of the Financial Empowerment Center. I think it's the incredible work that Neighborhood Services and Community Services are doing to try to help folks not just meet their immediate needs, but help them get out of this vicious cycle. So I appreciate the fact that we're trying to help as many people as possible. I'm sure the people that are getting help, like, but I could use that additional $100 or whatever, but as Tanisha pointed out, we have a very limited pot, and we're trying to be as generous as we can. As Councilmember Spiegel pointed out, we're being more generous even than some of our neighbors. So this is really sobering, but, you know, I'm glad that, you know, we're helping with what we can with the block grants, but then also the money that we're giving, working through the partner. So, yeah, I don't know if there's a way to land the plane, but just, you know, you want to be able to do more, but I understand some of the restrictions that we have at the federal level, so thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you all for this presentation. And I can see in the slides and the data and the conversation, the work and the effort that's going into this. Maureen, when you stood up and said that you guys were knocking on doors, that's incredible. That's absolutely incredible, that's above and beyond, to make sure that folks are going to be able to stay in their home. I can imagine a single parent with an eviction notice gets a knock on a door that says, "I'm here to help." Thank you, thank you all for the work that you do. It's amazing, there's not enough, but you take what there is and squeeze it to the nth degree. Way to go.
Thank you, Lisa. Rob Wu?
Just had some questions about the eligibility criteria. So are the three categories there prescriptive? Meaning those are the only three categories that could receive assistance under the program? Or are they favored? Meaning if you don't provide full funding within those three categories, does the funding open up for other households that don't meet those criteria?
You're talking about packet page 20, right?
Sorry.
Just for reference.
Package page 20, just for reference.
Right, so it is a requirement that they meet one of the standards listed below. I know something we discussed as a staff is to revisit, like, and review every year at a minimum to see, you know, maybe we overestimated how many households with minor age children or dependents would need the support, but that is the primary, that we're seeing that in senior households. So right now, it is a requirement for them to fall under one of those.
Okay, and so if funding is recognizing, having sat through this package and the very useful information, this question may be academic, but should you get to the end of the program year and not have dispensed full funding to these three categories? Then the money returns to?
As CDBG funds, it has to be spent, so if somehow we have no need.
Go elsewhere to the program?
It would be reprogrammed within the categories that we've approved for CDBG. But as you said, it's likely an academic question.
And so, thank you. Minor age children or dependents is minor aged modifying children, or is it modifying children and dependents?
And dependents.
So what if you had non-minor age dependents?
So they would have to be minor age dependents.
Okay, is there a rationale for that? I mean, if, for example, you've got a household where the head of household's caring for their elderly mother who's declared their, or parent that declared a dependent, they're going to be burdened. So maybe they're not able to access employment. You're moving forward, because Chris is going to yell at me for being so far away from the microphone. There we go, I didn't even need it. Have you thought that through? Also, the third bullet, residents who have a medically determinable physical or mental impairment, is the resident the applicant, or is it anybody in the household?
The resident would be the applicant. And it would be, it would be more so the household. So if the resident mentions that, you know, that, you know, there is some type of physical, mental impairment, then they would qualify because they're under that same address.
Okay, and then so I would just suggest clarifying that, you know, perhaps resident in the household or household resident or something that... But on the first one, I'd ask you perhaps to consider opening it up to other other categories of individuals that may be in vulnerable positions.
Would the, would standard number two or standard number three capture that concern? Councilmember, I'm just thinking about, you know, if I've got, you know, an elderly parent that I'm caring for, maybe that makes us eligible under standard number two because we're a senior household. Or if I've got an adult dependent who's got a mental or physical impairment that I'm caring for, maybe that puts us under category three.
So long as it's clear, I mean, I read number two as being seniors. The household is of seniors, not that there are mixed age. So, yeah, I fully accept that, just suggestions on clarifying and perhaps expanding.
Just to also clarify, the funds go to the household. So everybody in the household is then involved in the eviction prevention, right? So just as a reminder, it's not that a check goes to a specific resident and only that resident is the only one impacted, everyone in the household is impacted. And given that we have the limited funds, and these are very, very hard conversations that mostly Geraldine is having with our most vulnerable residents, it was my direction and guidance to staff that, you know, it is our highest priority to try and shore up this instability that minor age children would face, especially school-aged children, and that disruption that occurs with that. So if, you know, again, very, very limited funds, you heard $4 million versus $69,000. If that's our pot and we have, it's a very, very difficult exercise, but we've got two applications in front of us, we're favoring the application that has the minor age children that would be displaced and have schooling disrupted and all of those terrible things. Everyone will suffer in an eviction situation, but we are prioritizing minor age childhood, child households in our approach.
And are we prioritizing that because that's where the issue lies, that's what we see? Do we see that in the data?
I think we do. I think you heard from the earlier stats of how many children we've supported. It's not that we've not turned, so again, we can't tier it, you know? Who shows up at the doors, who shows up at the door. So we're not holding back funds because, you know, someone's in need and, you know, they don't meet that criteria. It's just, it's a prioritization. If we find ourselves in a position where we get more applications in one month than we've seen, you know, usually in a year, you know, these eligibility criteria give us a little more guidance on how to prioritize the thing.
Neil?
So, excuse me, the eligibility, the new eligibility criteria make good sense to me. The heading on the column says recommended new eligibility criteria. Are you looking for us to bless those or for somebody else?
They were recommended to me. They were recommended to me.
Recommended to me. All right, are you happy with it?
I am.
All right, that settles that, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, I mean, I don't wanna repeat what's been said, I associate myself with all of the thoughtful observations about the difficult decisions involved and the thanks to staff for delving into this and making these recommendations with, you know, the limited resources we have and, you know, what Councilmember McNulty was talking about in terms of tying all of this to our prioritization and vision for financial empowerment so that we can break the cycle of poverty over time while at the same time providing emergency relief when it's necessary, and that's a balancing act in terms of the limited resources that we have as a city. So I'll just associate myself with everything that's already been said about that. I wanted to ask about the $115,000 that we gave as a grant to, did you call it UMAN? I never, I never knew how to pronounce U-M-A-N. They, I assume UMAN has their own reasonable criteria for how they allocate that emergency funding, and I don't know if somebody can maybe talk a little bit about that and how it either lines up with or maybe differs a little bit from the restrictions that are applied by federal rules to the CDBG funding.
Yes, so UMAN is able to assist our city residents specifically, but it does differ that they, at one point, did not require a eviction notice, they didn't require a judgment, so they would, they would take cases that if you're behind on your rent, they would be able to assist with up to $1,000 in either utility disconnections or a late, late rent or eviction and/or evictions as well.
Okay, and I understand that they, I mean, I know we have other partners who provide other types of services and assistance, but I understand some of the utility providers are now offering, you know, amnesty programs and other types of assistance, whether it's, you know, electricity or water and gas, and I assume we're sort of connecting folks with those other programs that are available as well if they're eligible.
Yes, definitely, that is the first resource that we recommend the clients go to or our residents. So if they're eligible, you know, if they have a PEPCO bill, then they're able to go to the Office of Home Energy Assistance with the county, which is great, so they're able to do that. I'm able to help them fill out the application, gather the paperwork, and turn it in. But if it is utilities that are included in their rent, for example, that is where we're able to, or UMAN is able to assist, and so is our funds as well.
So what's, what's a little encouraging despite the, you know, the difficult conversation we're having is that there sometimes can be a first, second, third line of defense that we can sort of tap into to see if if somebody's not necessarily eligible for the criteria under the CDBG program, they might be eligible for some other types of assistance. And I did just kinda wanna, again, underscore that that $115,000 grant that comes from, you know, city revenues, it doesn't come from CDBG federal funding. We, as a city, have made a policy decision, a values decision, to include that above and beyond the CDBG funding that we allocate, and, you know, I think that's something to be proud of. And, you know, as was said, we wish we had more, and we always wish we could do more. And I think we'll all be sort of watching closely to see what happens with this current trend in higher demand, and we can sort of evaluate along the way or evaluate in the next budget cycle if there's a need to tweak the programs that we have. But I just wanna say thanks very much for prioritizing this and for figuring out how to maximize the limited resources that we have on what I consider to be, and I'm sure all of us consider to be, a really difficult and really important discussion.
All right, Tanisha.
I just wanna say, it's always a challenge for any staff member to take the work they do on a day-to-day basis and condense it down to a few slides to present to you all. They did a terrific job of that, but I, I think what you're hearing and what we don't see is the, really the life-changing, life-saving work that our staff are doing on a day-to-day basis, and Geraldine is right in the middle of that. It's not, it's first, second, third, fifth line of defense, but we take a case approach, and Geraldine leads that approach. So it's one family, one person at a time, and making sure that they are connected to every resource that they're eligible for and seeing it through. It's not, it's, you know, we, we do the hand-holding and the spoon-feeding and the translating and the filling out the application, whatever it takes to try and help that person or that family get to stability, and the addition of the FEC has only enhanced that work and watching them do that hand-in-hand. It is, it's truly remarkable what they're doing for our families in the city. And I just, while she's here, because we don't get to get presentations from Geraldine, and welcome to Maureen, who's been with us a few months and is doing incredible work as well, just thank you both for your efforts and your really frontline, hand-to-hand combat in some ways that you're doing to, to, to make things come together for our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, wait, you're not going yet? Hold on, hold on just a sec. I gotta open it up for the, there's nobody, there's no members of the public in the, in the audience. Oh, there is one member though. Is there anybody here who'd like to testify tonight or add comments or ask questions? And I'm not seeing a hand go up, so I'm gonna look on Zoom and ask if anybody would like to speak, ask a question, make a comment, testify one way or another, just use the Zoom raise hand function. Going once, going twice, okay, I'm not seeing any hands go up. Okay, now you are indeed off the hook, but we, we appreciate you guys very much, and Tanisha said it very well, you know, someone's gotta be in the front lines, it's important work and we're grateful for you to do it. So I will note that we do not have a work session next Tuesday, May 30th, but we do invite you to join us at our Memorial Day observance, and I'm just gonna look it up on my phone. It's 11:00 a.m. at Crispin Park on West Deer Park Road. It's a really nice ceremony, and I encourage people to join us there. Yeah, Tuesday, May 30th. And then the next regular meeting of the Mayor Council will be held on Monday, June 5th. So until next time, let's do great things Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.